All right, welcome everyone to the April 11, 2023 meeting of the Kentucky Board of Education. Thank you so much, especially to our board members for pivoting to a virtual online meeting today, even though we had scheduled a hybrid meeting, hoping to be in person there in Frankfurt at the Sauer Building. But as you received notice yesterday late afternoon, but due to a water main break, the building was without water for a time. They do have water now. It is, they are however, under a boil water advisory. It looks like it's going to be a good possibility that we will be at the Sauer Building for a hybrid meeting tomorrow. Those of you who are able to join us in person, we look forward to seeing you at that time. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Brewer to please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams here.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth here.
Patrice McQuerry.
Patrice McQuerry, I'm here.
Brandy Poe.
I'm here, having technical difficulties, so I might be switching over, but I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Poe.
Sharon Robinson.
Here, Sharon Robinson here.
Lee Todd.
I'm here.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble here.
Lou Young.
Lou Young here.
Joanna Stevens.
Joanna Stevens here.
Secretary Jamie Link.
Jamie Link is here.
President Erin Thompson.
Erin Thompson here.
Hey, Chair, you do have a forum.
All right, excellent. Thank you, everyone, again, and I should remind you that because we are back in a virtual setting today, you modeled exactly what I need you to do when we will take a roll call vote each time that we take action today. And just as you did, please state your name, vote yes or no, and we should be able to proceed as we did back in the olden days. At this time, I want to turn it over to Dr. Brewer and some really exciting presenters today from the Commissioner's Student Advisory Council, who will present their findings around school safety.
Wonderful, thank you so much. I believe our students are just still logging in. We had given them a 2:05 call time, so they may be still coming in. But we're very excited to have members of the Commissioner's Student Advisory Council on the call today to share the outcomes of some research they've done over the past year around school safety. They really wanted to have sort of an action oriented response to some of the school related incidents that have occurred. And so we were able to support them in doing some action research. They spent the summer reviewing literature and coming up with recommendations and drafted the policy brief that you have in your portal. We are extremely proud of the hard work that they put into this document. They did have a chance in January to share their recommendations with Representative Tipton and quite a number of members of the media, so they've had an excellent response to this. And so we are thrilled to have them here today, and without further ado, I will pitch to them. I believe Bentley is up to sort of start the presentation. Is Bentley on?
I'm really sure. You guys, you mean, you get, okay. So, we have done, this is a focus on school safety, which is the name of our policy brief. The policy brief, we started discussing what school safety looks like currently and how that can be changed after the Valley massacre in Texas. The next slide, please. We started. We started by identifying the issue at hand. What exactly were we looking at and how were we going to change that? From there, we divided into subgroups, which each subgroup was responsible for like referencing literature in other regards as to things that would happen or could happen before an incident, during an incident, and after a school safety incident. Each subgroup collaboratively worked together so that we could ensure that the document was cohesive. And then they, we were all helped by guided questions and we revised each other's work. So, with that in mind, I would like to hand it over to Peter, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Bentley. Our method, to elaborate a little bit on what Bentley said in the middle section, our method was broken into two parts, the working in subgroups and developing of recommendations. Over the summer, as Bentley said, we began to work in subgroups that we had independently defined to search for student guide suggestions. This is one of the important things we focused on, was taking our student experience, our student perspective, and kind of shaping our research and shaping our recommendations on what we had experienced as students. With our recommendations, we began research over the summer specifically through scholarly research that would, that would support our findings and showed that our recommendations were not just the words of some students, but were backed by hard science and would be effective in the future. With that, I'll pass it on to our next presenters.
Tom, are you on the call? Don't believe he is. Peter, are you able to pick up this section as well?
Yes, wonderful. So, we divided our, as I said, we were in subgroups and we divided into three subgroups. Our first subgroup was before the incident. How could, what can we do to minimize the chance an event will happen and prevent the greater effects before anything occurs? We developed three suggestions, and our first one is working on the STOP-Tip Line. Stop-Tip Line is a great resource that all schools in Kentucky have available to them. However, we recommend that we promote the Stop-Tip Line more. It's a great tool. It's been developed by the Department of Education and Department of Security for Kentucky, and we think that it would be best to promote it further to use an existing framework that will already fit our needs. Schramm just joined, I believe. Would you like to pick up from him? If not, if not, I can continue.
Give him a second to see if his technology is connecting still.
No problem.
Peter, if you want to go ahead and Schramm can jump in.
Sure. The School Safe, the Safe School Initiative found that 66% of attackers in school safety were engaged in concerning behaviors, perhaps the attack when unreported. This is like, this is a really clear statistic to us that shows that the STOP-Tip Line is a really great resource that we should further promote in our schools. Our second portion was improving the intervention rate. We found that through research and past findings, attacks and prevented attacks were found through identifying and reporting on at-risk behaviors. When we see in schools behaviors that are concerning, behaviors that could lead to attacks, the STOP-Tip Line is a great resource, but also we need to improve the rate after the tip has been submitted. We need to help teachers and help the staff work to intervene in these cases. Our third recommendation is supporting gun control. Federal licensed gun dealers must require background checks for anyone purchasing a firearm. As mental health awareness and information is increasing, we need to know more about it than ever. Statistics show that 28 out of 37 mass shooters between 1982 and 2019 were diagnosed with some sort of mental illness. Firearms safety can be greatly improved in these events prevented if we required mental health screens to purchase a specific firearms. This is our specific recommendation for gun control legislation. That is it for our, for this, for this portion. Can we go to the next slide, please?
Yes, I think Schramm might have been able to log in. Are you on the call now?
Yeah, I'm on the call. I was having some issues. Sorry. Give me one second. I'm sorry, there's just a lot, a lot of issues going on with my computer today. I've been trying to figure it out.
So that is okay. We, Peter was able to pick up this slide, but is there anything that you wanted to add?
Um, no, nothing to add. No, no.
I think Anastasia is up next, but is also having technical issues, so goes virtual meetings. So let's see if we can get Anastasia in the call, Tony.
Do you need me to assist with her real quick?
If you could, that would be great.
Sure, let me see if I can help. I'm going to try to call her in and see if that works. So if she pops up, that's what's happening there. We might want to just skip ahead and she can maybe pick up if she can. I think there's just an issue with a wall or something.
Okay. Peter, I know that you just presented the last slide, but would you like to go through the during an incident as well?
Certainly. So our second subgroup was the during the incident subgroup. We identified again, three key recommendations for during the incident. Our first recommendation are active shooter drills and a specific framework for active shooter drills. We recommend that active shooter drills are taken in each school throughout Kentucky, but in a specific framework. We would notify families beforehand in a week advance and then allow families to opt out if they would like to. Research has shown that in elementary schools especially, but also in middle and high schools, lockdown drills can be both trauma, can both recall trauma from past events and cause trauma in the current. We would like to both avoid this, but also keep the benefits of active shooter drills. That is our recommendation for active shooter drills. We'd also like to improve the training for first responders. In our, in our conversations with Commissioner Glass and Assistant Commissioner Dr. Woodstucker, we learned about the Colorado school shooting and the training facilities that they developed after Columbine. Some of these models we found to be very helpful for our recommendations, and we found that one of the bigger things that we can do is improve training for first responders, not only SROs, but EMS and FIRE, so that these events will be well choreographed beforehand to prevent any miscommunication. Miscommunication leads to our third recommendation, which is establishing a clear notification system for during an active shooter incident. If in a campus already in place statewide, has push notifications through email, text, and call. Parents register with their phone numbers and they're automatically set up when students enter their phone numbers into a minute campus. If in a campus could be used along or other programs to communicate to families the extent or another issue in an active shooter situation. This, this system could also be used to show places that students will meet and be transported to. And these, in the third part of our recommendations, the after the incident section.
Peter? Rima?
Yeah, so as Peter said, the final section of our report is how to handle the aftermath of a situation. So while preventative measures are obviously the most effective at reducing the frequency of school shootings, taking steps to ensure that the students feel safe when they come back is the number one priority, especially the mental health of the students, faculty, and staff. And according to the American Psychological Association, 28% of people who have witnessed a mass shooting develop post-traumatic stress disorder, also known as PTSD. And this can cause negative consequences on the learning environment. A school-based crisis intervention team needs to be in place to provide support and assistance to children in the aftermath of a crisis, including triage, short-term counseling, and referral to community services. These professionals should be kept for the remainder of the school year through the summer and be available to students at all times without cost to the families. Additionally, the creation of support groups in the community may be needed. Students may feel more isolated due to experiencing a traumatic event, and support groups allow them to process and rely on others for help. Throughout their entire life, the trauma experienced after a school shooting remains with students. And as such, policies should be considered with the residual effects of school shootings on student grades, achievement, and attendance. By adapting to the emotions of students, schools can ensure that the success of student achievement while not forcing students to stress both about grades and the school shooting. And with that, I'll pass it off to Alexandra for the second recommendation.
So after an incident, promoting a sense of community is vital for the well-being of students. To let families express their emotions, local specialists can encourage student-led vigils, support groups, group therapy sessions, and school board meetings. Due to their knowledge of the community, local specialists are best recommended. However, if funds allow, local counselors, mental health professionals, and leaders of faith-based organizations should be trained on trauma counseling. With this, donations are important in funding funerals, vigils, and other relief services. As witnessed, educational town hall style meetings allow caregivers to attempt to understand their children's behaviors and produce a plan of action for when these students reenter schools. It is important that volunteer clinicians are thoroughly trained in trauma and grief-informed practices as well as on preventing secondary traumatic stress. Even if families don't take it, it is important to show that support is available. With these town hall meetings, individuals can be provided with resources to begin the healing process, and I'll pass it back.
And the final recommendation we have for after an incident that we would like to hit on is repairing and rebuilding the school. Given such circumstances, the school's physical environment can be very triggering for students and staff, and we suggest that the school undergoes visual changes and also adopts more security features. To do so, the state must allocate emergency funds which aids the community involved. Outside funding pages led by local organizations can also help pay for counseling, food, shelter, improvement of school security and infrastructure, and other vital services. Along with an emergency fund, we want to highlight the importance of support. State leaders and those who represent Kentucky should be active and involved in helping and supporting the community. By continuously engaging with the community, members understand that the issue is being taken seriously and they are not alone. Lastly, under this section, we would like to note that active shooter drills must be redesigned. These drills can be extremely triggering for students and staff, but are vital. We suggest that each teacher be informed when a drill will be taking place in advance. We also want to make sure that students are aware of the drill. This allows students to prepare themselves mentally, but also allows them time to reach out to help if they feel like they are not properly prepared or wish to opt out. And with that, we'll pass it on to the concluding remarks.
In conclusion, our group, yes, okay. In conclusion, our group begun our work by first identifying the issue we were approaching. We worked in small groups which were responsible for identifying student recommendations regarding this topic. We took those suggestions and developed them further with more evidence-based scholarly research on each recommendations. The recommendations are as follows. Before an incident, before an incident occurs, it is recommended that the STOP-Tip Line is further promoted. Intervention rates in school safety incidents are improved. And legislation that supports proper gun control is supported. For actions during an incident, it is recommended that more comprehensive yet trauma-informed active shooter drills take place. First responders receive more comprehensive response training, and that a clear notification system for use on and off school campuses is established. It is recommended that after a school safety incident occurs, mental health supports are provided for the community, especially those directly impacted by the incident. Hosting town hall style meetings is also recommended, it's also recommended. These are often a chance for the community to take a sober look back at the incident and reflect on the events that occurred. And promptly repairing and rebuilding school buildings and campus grounds. Symbolism is strong, and if the school is repaired or rebuilt, if necessary, it can lead to further healing of the community at large. And we would like to open the floor up to questions. Trusty QR code if you would like to submit an online question as well.
Excellent. All right, thank you all so much. Board members, we have plenty of time to engage in conversation with the students. You might call on them by name, or feel free to just open up a question and they can decide who is best to respond. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you to the Student Advisory Committee Council for giving us a really structured framework so that we can begin to delve into these issues to find ways to support the full implementation of your recommendations. I have a question about the support for getting the active shooter drills redesigned to incorporate trauma-informed pedagogy or learning. Do you believe that we are, these are, you say they are essential, but they can provoke trauma if they aren't done correctly? So who all needs to be trained to conduct these active shooter drills? Is it teachers? Is it, do we need to involve parents and other community members so that they understand the nature of the drill and why it's going on? Did you discuss that?
I mean, I think right off the bat, it's mostly focused on teachers because these drills like usually take place in a classroom setting, like during like an English class or like a Spanish class. And I think like a lot of the time for students who've already experienced, it's like the little things that can be super triggering and make all their progress that they made forward regress. So it's just like, like at the first and foremost, like getting the teachers prepared on how to act in these situations.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I also want to echo Dr. Robinson's commendations for all of the students for your work. I've read the report. It is a scholarly product, and I am so proud of the work that you did. I also commend you for tackling a really hard subject. This was not a puppies and rainbows kind of an endeavor on your part, and I appreciate that so much. I think I'll toss this one to Bentley. What, what is next? This is not the kind of work that you guys can engage in and just kind of be done with. So what might be next for you all as you think about moving your research and your dissemination of research forward?
Oh, okay. We were planning to present to other members, well, other bodies, like the K groups, the three better organizations and stuff like that, if I recall correctly. Meredith may be able to help me answer this one. And after that, we were just going to see how our presentations were received and what we could do as far as like on-the-ground work connected with this matter.
Do you think the Student Advisory Council will continue to study it next year?
To an extent, yes.
Okay.
But we've also have decided to start picking up on another project beginning the next academic year.
Excellent, and great call. If I don't know an answer to a question, I call on Meredith, too.
You did a great job, Bentley, yes. So we actually met this morning with the Student Advisory Council, who also was exceptionally flexible and moved to a virtual setting. So we were able to talk about how to move forward with the school safety presentations. Throughout the process of developing the recommendations, we sort of talked through who the different target audiences were. And as you can observe in their recommendations, really, the General Assembly only has a kind of a small role in what they've recommended. A lot of this will fall on local school boards and school districts to sort of hear from the students, their request for support around some of the policies that already, that are already in place around active shooters, sort of how those can be implemented in a more effective way, taken more seriously, utilization of the STOP-Tip Line, those sorts of things. So we've talked about that really their local school district is maybe the best next audience. And so in addition to the K groups that Bentley mentioned, we hope we can get them in front of different school boards as well.
Excellent. I'm actually working on a book chapter right now about keeping schools safe from the inside out and really leaning into your all's work as an example of engaging students, amplifying student voices in the conversation around school safety because you're the ones whose environment is threatened, and so I love the chance to hear from you. Board members, other questions for Bentley, Peter, Alexandra, Sharman, or Rima? Oh, Dr. Todd, I think you just need to unmute and you'll be next.
Just a general question, who would like to respond? Have you talked to any other student groups that have formed from schools where they've actually had shooting incidences that have taken place? To see what the likelihood of some of their ideas being adopted or methods that they found to be useful to be able to get your ideas adopted?
We do have some members on our council that like attend Marshall County High School. So they were super insightful on like how their school has like reacted to the situation when that incident occurred. And it just kind of like that insight has, we've put that into our work as like a model almost.
Thank you.
Sorry, and Mrs. Bloodworth, thank you.
Well, my question kind of ties in with Dr. Todd's really. I was just thinking about students that I have in my classes at Murray State. And, you know, the Marshall County shooting was not that long ago. And this, how much they still seem to be traumatized by that event even now. You know, it's been five years, I guess. I just wonder if there's any research on how long, you know, counseling and those kinds of things need to go on? I'm wondering if we pull out those supports too fast because these students still seem very impacted, of course, by, by those events. And I just, I feel like maybe they're not still getting supports that they need. I was just wondering if you read anything about that or had any insight on that.
That's a great question. Thank you. We read a lot about the importance of community in that. And I think what you're saying, we are important, agrees with, is that the, the time required for healing is longer than we originally appreciated, but also that we need to be more focused on what really is helping students who have gone through an incident. We really found that community was one of the really important things, and then restructuring some of these activities that could trigger trauma. But we certainly found that the time and the methods for helping students work through the trauma might need to be shifted a little bit from what we currently do.
Yeah, I think, you know, they're, these students are still in a school setting, so I think it still feels kind of raw to them, but then they don't have maybe the community support from their hometown. You know, they're at, at a university, so I just think it's something to think about, how, how maybe the university could better support them as they navigate this. So I just think it's something to think about how, how maybe the university could better support them as they navigate this.
Yeah, excellent, excellent. And Dr. Thompson's on the call. Maybe we can hear from him in a bit about that as well. Mrs. McCreary?
Thank you, Chair Young. I too applaud the comprehensive work that you all have done. The professionalism that has gone into this is superb. We're in good hands for our future here in the Commonwealth. The question I have for you is it seems as though our dialogue is focusing more on reactive measures rather than proactive measures. And I know, as I said, you did comprehensive work. So you worked toward information on the proactive side of it. I'm curious to know, to those with whom you have presented this work, what has the response been? Has there been more encouragement and indication that you have support toward the proactive side of this? Or the reactive side?
I can take this one as well. We presented to Representative Tipton, he was very supportive of, first of all, the entire brief. But the proactive sections are, at least for the, from the perspective of legislature, a lot less costly. The improving the rate of intervention and promoting the stop tip line are high impact solutions that require little overall financial contribution. So we found a lot of support for those from Representative Tipton. But there wasn't an overwhelmingly unbalanced support for either side of the incident.
All right, thank you. And Dr. Thompson? Oh, sorry, were you gonna add something Bentley? Please.
Yes, sorry. I was just saying, I feel like the audience's perspective on to whether they would be better better adaptable to understanding the proactive or the reactive side really depends on who the audience itself is. So if we were to be presenting to the General Assembly, they would probably be more interested in the proactive side and how can we handle something like as it's happening or before it happens? And now if we were to be presenting to, say, the local, the school counselors advisory council, they would probably be more involved with the reactive side and how they can play a role in that.
Excellent. Super helpful. Dr. Thompson?
First of all, let me just say, good job. I really appreciate a couple of things. As a researcher, I appreciate students getting engaged at this level. I mean, it says a lot about, more than just the outcome of the study, but it says a lot about you students and exactly the kind of framework you're giving for other students to follow in the area of research. So I want to congratulate you for that. One question basically, and then I'd like to answer the university question if I could. That it goes to more of the proactive too. There's a lot of research around how students themselves, along with the community members in the schools, as well as around, can do some of the proactive work with middle schools and other, and other places. Did you all look into that at any level in creating a set of proactive conditions, with a lack of a better phrase? Including the education of students that may be apt to bring a firearm to school or any of those other pieces that, that the research are showing? Did you all do any of that work?
I feel like with our recommendation regarding like increased promotion of the stop tip line, that sort of ties in with that. So we are wanting to promote that the stop tip line actually exists, but also encourage students and community members to understand what exactly qualifies as an at-risk situation? Like, how do you identify what can be considered like behaviors that would be identifiable to someone who could potentially cause a concern?
Good. Okay. Thank you. Going to the question that was asked earlier, universities are heavily engaged in this, all the way from our school safety group at EKU, as you all know, that's doing a lot of the primary stuff. But also at many of our institutions, we are, we're doing a lot of the research around what can be done in this area. So that's the obvious place that we're engaged with, also working within, as some of you all know, and Lou, I'm sure you do, that many of our post-secondary institutions are working in the communities with our P-12 to help identify and work on and create intervention strategies. In addition to that, the mental health counseling that we've jumped in on every incident there has been, and react, this is reactive, obviously. Whereas we've used our folks on our campuses to help with the issues that have happened within each of the local schools that had incidents that happened. So there's a whole lot more with this, but universities are heavily engaged in this conversation in the proactive and the reactive side. The area where I think we can get more engaged, maybe what you're thinking about is the idea of us working with students like what we see here in creating a, a more complete way of thinking about how students can get more engaged as these students have with this research. I think this is an area that we can work with our P-12 partners to actually increase and make this a standard of the way that we're doing business around school safety, no doubt, but also around many other things that are happening within these districts.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Erin. And of course, we're all very cognizant of, not only did we have a mass shooting in Louisville yesterday, but you lost someone at Jefferson Community Technical College as well. So a really bad day for the Commonwealth yesterday. So our topic is sadly timely today. Ms. Adams?
I just want to, I want to echo what Chair Young said about this being a very timely issue. And it's timely every day for our students. I want you to know how much I look forward to hearing from the students each time. The last, the meeting where we had Jude talk about discipline and the research she had done. And then I was so excited to see that the students were on the agenda again today. And you just, you bring things home to us. You're the reason that we're here and I commend you for all the work that you do. Especially liked what you said about making that stop tip line, making the students more aware of it. I think sometimes as, as policymakers and as adults, we think, well, we've put this in place, so now that's all we need to do. So what are some of the ways that you wanted to make that tip line more accessible and make students more aware of it?
I think it's honestly just like a school by school level because there's so many counties in Kentucky and everything. So it's more important that locally it's promoted, whether that be through the school administration and like you go classroom and talking about it, or just within the student body itself.
Do you think it's more effective when students encourage other students to do it than it is when adults do it?
Oh yeah, for sure. Like if, I think a lot of the time, like people look up to their peers. And if they notice that like, hey, like you can use this platform, other people are gonna get inspired to start using it.
Well, I know that this, this team is certainly a group of students that other students have looked up to. Thank you all so much. You did a great job.
Excellent. Thank you. And to Dr. Poe?
Hello, can you hear me okay? Now I've been having technical difficulty. Okay, thanks. You know, I want to commend them on, on doing their report. But the one thing that I do have concerns on, and because I've been in situations where they've actually had active assailant situations that they do traumatize. And I do have a concern that we're saying that all schools and all systems should require active shooter drills because of some of the mental health issues that do come about. So I know we addressed that somewhat, but I am, just want to make sure that everybody realizes I am hesitant on those. I've seen them in action. I've been in part of them. And even as an adult, they're a scary situation when they're occurring. So I think we have to be really concerned about that particular issue. I just wanted to state that.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you so much. I, I agree, especially with very young children. It's, we had one at UK and it's, it's definitely hard to live through. It just makes everything really palpable. But I appreciated the way, I believe it was Bentley maybe who was talking about that, or Peter, just being sensitive to the fact that we don't want to re-traumatize or traumatize students just through the enactment of the active shooter training. So I really, that sensitivity, I think, was well-placed. As we wrap, thank you again sincerely for your time and for the change of venue and being with us online today, persevering through technical difficulties, et cetera. And many thanks to your adult advocates, Dr. Brewer, Dr. Glass, Dr. Woods Tucker, Toni and her team, who have supported you through not only the writing, but the research and then through the dissemination and presentation phase. I hope you will rely on those adult advocates to push policy agendas that you guys see as important as we move forward. I know Brian Perry has been working with you some, our legislative liaison. So we are open to, we stand ready to support you in a policy context as we move forward. So thank you all very much. Enjoy the rest of this beautiful day, I think, all across Kentucky. And thanks so much for your hard work on this important issue. All right, thank you. Dr. Brewer, any closing remarks there as we wrap, or should we move right into internal board business?
No, I, I think we can move forward. I do want to share that in the meeting we had this morning, the students did identify their topic for this next year's research endeavor. And so they will be focusing on student voice, identifying areas that it has been elevated in Kentucky as exemplars and helping to promote the infusion of student voice across Kentucky and the nation. They were excited to hear from our Teacher of the Year, who actually said that Kentucky is a national model for student voice and has been contacted by representatives from Wyoming who want to develop a similar Student Advisory Council modeled after the amazing one we have here in Kentucky. So we will be digging in on the topic of student voice. But again, focusing still on promoting the work that they have done around school safety. So we're so proud of, of this group and their hard work. So thank you all for coming to present to the board. As, as we told you, they were a very receptive and welcoming audience. So we are appreciative of the board for taking this time to hear from our students today.
Excellent. You get a bunch of googly-eyed, heart-eyed emojis from me on your topic for next year. Excellent choice. Thank you. At this time, we will turn to internal board business. You received minutes for the February 7, 2023 KBE regular meeting, day one, and February 8, day two, along with March 29, KBE special committee meeting, and the March 30, KBE awards committee meeting minutes. Those were all distributed to you in advance. First, do we have any corrections to any of the minutes? If not, I am open to a motion to approve those minutes.
No, maybe this is Lee.
Thank you. We have a motion from Dr. Todd. Do we have a second?
Holly Bloodworth, I second.
Thank you, Holly. We have a motion and a second. I almost gave the second to Mary, the interpreter. I realized that she was not seconding the motion. Any further discussion about the minutes as presented? Hearing none, I'll ask Dr. Brewer to call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, vote yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McCreary.
Patrice McCreary, yes.
Brandy Poe.
Yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, yes.
All members present have voted.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mrs. McCreary for a discussion about the recipient of the 2023 CARRAM Award for Excellence in Education Policy.
Thank you, Chair Young. As always, this is one of the high points for us. The awards committee did meet. And I would like to share with you information about the award that we are going to ask for your agreement on the motion for our proposed recipient. David Caram served on the Kentucky Board of Education from 2009 through 2016. He served for 33 years in the Kentucky State Senate and is Chair of the Senate Education Committee. During his tenure in the Kentucky General Assembly, Caram championed the passage of the Kentucky Education Reform Act, CARA as we know it, and led the efforts for the 4% school tax levy by school districts. This award is given in the spring of each year to state policymakers, education leaders, or citizens who have made notable state-level contributions to the improvement of Kentucky's public education system. The criteria for receiving this award includes, but is not limited to, demonstrated leadership and policy development, passage or implementation resulting in increased educational opportunities for students, improved educational, post-secondary, or workforce outcomes for students, or increased capacity of teachers or school staff to better meet the academic, social, or emotional needs of Kentucky students. So on behalf of the awards committee, I would like to share that the committee met on Thursday, March 30th. Special thanks to the committee and those making preparations for that meeting, and determined that candidate number five best met the criteria of the award. Therefore, I would like to move approval of candidate number five as the recipient of the Kentucky Board of Education 2023 CARRAM Award for Excellence in Education Policy, and ask the Chair for the Board's approval to recognize candidate number five at the Board's upcoming June regular meeting.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Committee Chair McCreary, and to the committee for all the work. As you know, board members, coming from committee, this motion does not require a second. But do we have any discussion? Hearing none, Dr. Brewer, would you please call the roll?
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McCreary.
Patrice McCreary, yes.
Brandy Poe.
Brandy Poe, yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, I vote yes.
Hey Chair, all members have voted.
Excellent. Thank you again. Can't wait for the big reveal at the June meeting for the 2023 CARRAM Award. At this time, the next item is related to some slight revisions to the KBE regular meeting calendar. Those are included in your KSBA portal. You'll note that we do have one date change in October and one location change in August. And at this time, would ask for the board to consider a motion to approve these revisions. Do I have such a motion?
Motion by Steve Trimble.
Thank you, Mr. Trimble. And do we have a second?
Patrice McCreary, I second.
Thank you, Mrs. McCreary. Any discussion about those changes? Hearing none. Dr. Brewer, would you please call the roll?
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, I vote yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McCrery.
Patrice McCrery, I vote yes.
Brandy Poe.
Brandy Poe, yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, I vote yes.
Chair, all members have voted.
Excellent. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is a bit of arm twisting. We need to select a member of a committee of the National Association of State Boards of Education, NASB. This committee is the Public Education Positions Committee. They call it PEP. And this group submits new resolutions or position statements and/or amendments to their standing resolutions or existing policy statements that amplify NASB members' collective national voice. So this is an opportunity to engage in some national advocacy around these public statements. The committee's work is almost entirely virtual, about a Zoom call every other month, and very minimal time involved. So we do have an opportunity at this time to self-nominate or nominate someone to serve on that committee. So before we open that up, do we have anyone who would be interested in serving? I anticipated that might be the case. None of you are making eye contact. I am willing to serve in that capacity if and would be happy to self-nominate to serve in that role. If we have such a motion, is that, I don't want to motion myself in, Meredith.
I'll make that motion. Lou Young does this for us.
And I'll second that.
Excellent. Thank you. A motion by Mr. Trimble, a second by Dr. Poe. Any other nominations? Really? Hearing none. Dr. Brewer, would you please call the roll?
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, I vote yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McCrery.
Patrice McCrery, yes.
Brandy Poe. Dr. Poe, I apologize. I didn't catch that.
I said enthusiastically, yes.
Such a fan.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, yes. All right, thank you. And I will keep you posted about those meetings. Looking forward to the word smithing ahead. The next item on the agenda, I'm so happy to turn over to Joanna, who served for us as an ad hoc member of the committee that is making recommendations to us on the non-voting student and teacher members. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Stevens at this time.
Thank you. And the Kentucky Board of Education truly values teacher and student voice, and we are so grateful to have an active teacher and current student serving as a non-voting members. And I feel like I just started, and it's already time to find my replacement. But anyways, to be selected as the 2023-2024 teacher member, the applicant must be employed on a full-time basis by a Kentucky Public School District in a position for which the Education Professional Standards Board, EPSB, certification is required. They cannot be employed in an administrative role, and they must reside in Kentucky's first congressional district. To be selected as the 2023-2024 student member, the applicant must be enrolled in a Kentucky public high school, be a junior in good standing on July 1, which means a sophomore at this time of application, and they must reside in Kentucky's fifth congressional district. And the KDE Commissioner's Student Advisory Council reviewed the applicants for the student position. The KDE Teacher Advisory Council reviewed the applicants for the teacher position. A special committee from each group recommended three candidates for each position for our consideration. And so we appreciate each council's support of this process and their thoughtful review of the applications. So on behalf of the special committee, I would like to share that the committee met on March 29 and determined that teacher applicant number one and student applicant number seven were the preferred candidates to serve as the 2023-2024 student and teacher non-voting members. Therefore, I would like to move approval of teacher applicant number one, student applicant number seven, as the 2023-2024 teacher and student non-voting KBE members. And I'd like to ask the chair for the board's approval of these applicants. And we do request that the board approve withholding their names on the selected applicants until they are announced at the board's regular meeting on June 6.
All right, excellent. That was a lot of work on your part and that of Jude, so and the committee representation from both teacher and student non-voting selection. So thank you for that. And as you know, board members coming out of committee, that does not require a second. Any further discussion? All right, with our thanks to Ms. Stevens and to Ms. Dolly, Dr. Brewer, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, I vote yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McCrery.
Patrice McCrery, yes.
Brandy Poe.
Yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, I vote yes. All right, and congratulations to these two new members. I don't know if you know who you are yet. I don't know who you are, but I'm excited about it. Can't wait to meet you at the June meeting, and thanks for your willingness to serve. At this point, Dr. Brewer, three minutes early, we are going to hit the consent agenda. And we do have three items for your consideration. Board members, as a reminder, you know that the consent requires a vote as a whole. But we do allow for pulling any items from the list that you might want to move. Typically, these are items that the staff has identified as non-controversial, more routine in nature. But does anyone have a consent item that you would like to have moved? If not, then we will, I would be open to a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda as presented?
So.
Oh, excellent. I think everybody moved. I think I heard Dr. Todd followed by Ms. Adams for a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Dr. Brewer, please call the roll.
Julian Adams.
Joanne Adams, yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McCrery.
Patrice McCrery, yes.
Brandy Poe.
Brandy Poe, yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, I vote yes. And many thanks to Meredith for the note in the chat. I did not realize that Steve, Holly, and Jamie also served on the ad hoc committees to select the non-voting members. So thanks to all of those members. I don't want to leave out any of those kudos for your support of that process. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Henry County Schools District Facility Plan Priority Waiver. With us to represent that waiver, our Associate Commissioner, Robin Kenny, Division Director, Che Ritter, and I see that Henry County Schools Superintendent Jim Master also on the call for us today. So I will turn this over to Robin and team. And board members, you do have access to this information in your portal.
Thank you very much, Chair Young. Your first action item for consideration today is a waiver request from the Henry County Board of Education. It's actually two waivers that are complementary in nature to each other. The waivers relate to a, to property contemplated for purchase by the district to be used for the construction of a new central office, future expansion of the high school, and parking, athletic facilities, and an agricultural field. The first waiver requested is waiver of Section 44B of 702-KAR4:050 and relates to an easement which traverses the site which is desired to be purchased. The second waiver is a waiver request from the Kentucky School Facilities Planning Manual, incorporated by reference in 702-KAR4:180, which would allow the new central office to be included in priority two rather than priority four of the district facility plan. We believe the request by Henry County has, is fact-specific in nature. And so we've spent a good deal of time working with the district and appreciate their efforts and answering all of our questions related to the, to the two waivers. I'm going to let Che Ritter kind of walk us through a high-level summary. There is a rather extensive and lengthy staff note that will have additional details for your review and consideration. And then, of course, we appreciate Superintendent Jim Masters being with us to provide any comments and also to answer any questions about the two waivers. So, Chair, I'm going to turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Robin. Good afternoon, everybody. As Robin said, these two waivers are intertwined. And, you know, for some context, I hope you all have in your documents a map of this site. It's a little easier to understand the context of it. But on the south side of the high school is, I believe it's about a 20-acre lot with an oil pipeline easement that runs sort of south of the baseball field. And this is tied, of course, to a central office, which would be hypothetically located in the bottom left of that property. The district, of course, whenever we, you know, start working on these waiver requests, we like to have several conversations with the district just to ask a lot of questions to make sure, you know, everyone's on the same page. And from the beginning, Henry County is very open and had, you know, really done their homework to understand, you know, what this property could and could not be used for. The central office, as is included in staff note, you'll see their existing central office, which is located just outside of Newcastle, is a pretty aged building with some limitations in how they can use it. And this is, if you've been by the campus of Henry County High School, it certainly would, you know, be there. And there are some also traffic issues due to a pretty major highway running right by the high school, US 421. So the first part of the waiver is the prohibition of the easement traversing the site. And if you read the regulation verbatim, it's basically, if you can move it to the perimeter, that's fine, but you can't have it traversing the site. Of course, with the oil pipeline, moving that to the perimeter is just not feasible. However, if you look at the, the map that the district has provided, you can see that they have no plans to build on top of it, of course, and they're taking some effort to sort of stay away from it, if you will. We walked through that with them as well, just to be thorough. And the part two of this is moving the central office up the priority list. And the reason is typically a central office would be in priority four. But in order to use an expiring SFCC offer, that's the School Facilities Construction Commission, it needs to be in priority one or two. So they've requested, or I should say, the Henry County School Board has requested to move this priority up to two so they can use this expiring offer. And it gets a little complicated because they do have some other priorities, but their bonding at current time, or I should say at current, does not allow them to reach that. However, if you read deep into the staff note, and yes, we realize it's a long one, they are addressing their first priority, which is Campbell'sburg Elementary. As the bonding starts to get paid off on some other projects, they're going to really have a much more bonding potential to address that Campbell'sburg Elementary priority. And I think it's very important to note, and we always like seeing this, if you look at toward the bottom of the staff note about groups consulted, SFCC has been supportive of this waiver, and he's here with us today, Superintendent Masters. In the first conversation, he engaged each elementary school to kind of lay out to them what the longer-term and shorter-term plan was. They are currently working on their district facility plan. And so they've done quite a bit of work to what we would call knock off the priorities, if you will, to kind of clear that off their plate. And again, he's met with a lot of the local stakeholders to make sure everyone understands what, you know, their goal is. And of course, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, the oil pipeline and their representatives, Sherman Carter Barnhart Architects, engineers, et cetera, have also looked at that oil pipeline as well. Be glad to entertain any questions or to turn it over to Superintendent Masters, Chair Young.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and hear from Chair, from Superintendent Masters, and then I had just a couple of questions to clarify the motion. Jim, welcome.
Hey, how are you all today?
Doing well. Just a chance to hear from you about this request.
Sure. Well, going into my first full year as superintendent here at Henry County, and of course, you know, our priority is always to build schools. The way our bonding capacity is right now, we will not have the, the ability to build a new elementary school until 2028, which is Campbell'sburg Elementary. So what I have done is looked at purchasing a land for a future Campbell'sburg Elementary, and I think we've located that. But what we do have, we're in a situation where we have enough bonding capacity to replace our current central office, which was built in 1902. We're unable to use the upstairs. It's not insulated. We're unable to use the basement. We now have about three to four people within one office space because we're having to share. And so it's, we've got to do something different. And so this is why we want to do the central office, but also want to throw a caveat of I'm entertaining the idea of having additional space for daycare for our teaching staff as we move forward, like other school districts currently have in place. And then, more importantly, we're going to add tennis courts, which are, we don't have in our county right now for our kids to have a place to practice. We want a practice soccer field for our students because we currently do not have space for them. They have to go off campus to do that. And then we're going to have an agricultural area. And so I've been working with our food service director, Anna, and we're actually thinking about growing our own vegetables, which could be used within our cafeteria, our food service. The good thing is, everything that we've designed is based on looking 20 years ahead. So anything that we currently do on this land will positively impact the future. So for example, if we're ever in a position to add a local technology center or a area technology center, this land will enable us to do that. We're well away from the oil line. In fact, we're not even going to have a road or anything like that going over it. The only thing we might be doing is driving a tractor over it to cultivate the land that's across from it.
All right. Thank you so much. And many thanks to Robin and Che, who have been informing us along the way about the developments as they have really kind of dug into your Henry County business, as Che would say. Says he doesn't make eye contact to you when he drives through the neighborhood. So we really appreciate their diligence in trying to make sure this is the best arrangement that they can make. Robin or Che, I just wanted to clarify, there really is kind of a two-for-one, two-part request, waiving the regulation as it relates to the easement, as well as waiving the requirements of the planning manual to change that priority. Would you like those as two separate motions, or can we bundle that as a motion? What's cleanest for you?
I'd probably defer to Todd Allen on that, but it might be cleaner to do them separately.
Thank you so much, Todd. How would you have us proceed?
Separately, certainly works.
Excellent. Thank you.
And Chair Young, my apologies for interrupting, but I believe Mrs. Adams may have a question. I see a hand raised.
Yes, thank you. And as a, as a native Henry County, and she gets priority questions. And board members, I will open up to full questions at this point before we, we work through the motion. Ms. Adams?
Well, I don't really have a question. I do have a comment. I'm very excited to see these changes that are coming up in Henry County. And Dr. Masters, while no one in this county loves historic buildings more than I do, I'm ready for you. And Dr. Masters, while no one in this county loves historic buildings more than I do, I'm ready for you to move out of that one.
Thank you. And I want to thank Che and Robin too, because I feel like we've had every single agency and human body available to come look at the land and help us work this out and make sure that it's something that's going to be good for the future of Henry County. So I want to thank Che and Robin for, for leading that charge.
Excellent. Mrs. Adams, I have been to the amazing Newcastle Henry County Schools Central Office on the floor that we're allowed to go on anyway. And I do think it is a much needed new construction for the community. Board members, what other questions might you have? All right, hearing none. I think that the first motion that I would ask for would be the waiver of section 44, Regulation Requirements Regarding the Prohibition of an Easement Traversing a Site. Is that the right one, Meredith?
That's correct, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have such a motion?
Yes, I, Steve Carroll, make the motion that we approve that waiver of the section 44, the regulation easement site.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Trimble. Do we have a second?
Sharon Robinson, a second.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. On that motion and second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, Dr. Brewer, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, I vote yes.
Polly Bloodworth.
Polly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McCrary.
Patrice McCrary, I vote yes.
Randy Poe.
Randy Poe, I vote yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, I vote yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, I vote yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, I vote yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, I vote yes. Excellent. And then Dr. Brewer has put in some language for the second motion. This is the one that, that regards the change of priority in the planning manual for, to move this up from a priority four to a priority two. Do we have such a motion?
Sharon Robinson, I saw move.
On a motion from Dr. Robinson, do we have a second?
Patrice McCrary, I second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bloodworth. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, Dr. Brewer, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, I vote yes.
Polly Bloodworth.
Polly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McCrary.
Patrice McCrary, I vote yes.
Randy Poe.
Randy Poe, yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, I vote yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, I vote yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, I vote yes, with congratulations to Superintendent Masters and the entire Henry County Schools community. So I can't wait to see the new building.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate it. It's going to be good for our staff and our students.
Excellent. Thank you again. All right, the next item on our agenda is minimum specifications for school buses. I always tell Elisa, there's nothing more glamorous than school bus specs. So I'm happy to turn it over to Elisa to give us some, oh, and with her, of course, is Che. He loves a good school bus specification as well.
I, I do.
To present some pretty minor changes this time, Elisa. Thank you.
Good, good afternoon. So the school bus specifications are put together by a committee of our school district personnel, which includes superintendent, driver trainers, drivers, inspectors, technicians, and transportation directors. So on an annual basis, they come together and determine what changes need to be made on the school bus. Some years, there's a lot of changes, and some years they're very minor. This year, we had some technical things that need to be updated, as well as I have a top six for you. We updated our warranty verbiage. Currently, it says that the date is in August. But because of the delays in our supply chain and the new electric vehicles rolling out, things are taking longer than they have in the past. So we have updated our warranty policy to have the warranty start in August or 10 days after the new inspection, whichever is later. We removed Kentucky-specific tests for the floor burn test. Our, the only difference was the number of feet. So we changed over to the nationally recognized test for that. The manufacturers had requested that we make that change. It was causing undue burden and it really didn't make much of a difference in regards to the results that they were receiving. We did add interior land, that the interior lamp shall turn on when the emergency exits are opened and the key is in the ignition. The emergency alarm is also required to turn on when the emergency exits are open. This will allow the driver to see what's happening and illuminate the bus in an emergency or when students are messing around with windows or doors. And so that was one of the things that was requested by the district. You have probably seen in the news, people, parents accessing the bus, going up the stairs, addressing students, addressing the driver. So we are adding a no trespassing sign on the stepwells in addition to the verbiage use hand, use handrail. So we're informing the students to use the handrail and we're informing the public that they're not allowed on the bus without permission. We also added the allowance of a OEM cup holder due to the extreme heat conditions in the summer and the fall. In the past, several years ago, we allowed students to start having water on the school bus. We still ask them not to drink while the bus is moving, but when the buses are 90 degrees, we've got to get them some type of relief if they don't have that AC. We also removed the required location for the lift to allow additional seat configurations, which can allow more students on the bus. Most recently, we worked with the Kentucky School for the Deaf and are providing them with a school bus that maximizes the seating while allowing up to four wheelchairs on the bus. And so we brought that to the board, or excuse me, to the committee, and they agreed that, that, that the option should move forward. So instead of having it directly in the front, they can have it towards the back or in the rear, depending on the school bus. And there was much controversy over the lollipop lights that are on the school bus in the front of the type C buses, the buses with the nose. So they requested that these lights be added back as standard versus optional. So that was done at the committee's request. It was overwhelmingly a yes through the committee. So we went forward with that. And again, as I stated, most of the other changes that were done were technical in, in nature. So that may have been updating a number or removing something that's no longer needed. So I am open for any questions.
Excellent. When you make a recommendation to change the lights, for example, is that just on new purchases moving forward or does that have to be retrofit?
Anything that we add to the school bus can be retrofitted as long as the OEMs allow it. So for type C buses that were ordered in the last three years, if they wanted to re-add those lights, they can, but they're not required to.
Okay. And the signage is, those are stickers, right?
Correct. On the stepwell, it'll say no trespassing on one stepwell, and then as you go up, the other one will say use handrail. There's nowhere on the bus does it say no trespassing. So we're, we're informing the community.
Board members, what questions might you have from Ms. Hanley? All right, hearing none. I'm open to a motion to approve the Kentucky Minimum Specifications for School Buses as described.
I saw move, Chair.
Thank you for the motion from Ms. McCrary and a second from Dr. Poe. Any further discussion?
No, I just want to thank all those committee members. When you look through, there are a lot of great people that's on there and respect them so well.
Excellent. Thank you for that. All right, Dr. Brewer, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, yes.
Polly Bloodworth.
Polly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McCrary.
Patrice McCrary, yeah.
Randy Poe.
Yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, I vote yes. And a lot of love for you, Ms. Hanley, over in the chat, you and the team. Thanks to you and to your team at K D E, as well as the committee, as Dr. Poe said, for attending to these important details year after year. So thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you guys so much.
Thank you all.
Okay, board members, as we round the turn, we have three review items, starting with a legislative update from Brian. He would, he did ask us as we were planning for the meeting that if there are any, he's going to give us a general overview because he's been with us throughout the session. But if you have any particular pieces of legislation that you want a drill down, Brian is happy to, to provide that as well.
Thanks, Chair Young. So let's get started. Can I get the next slide, please? There we go. So just kind of as a wrap up, despite all the talk before the session started about getting back to the true intent of the short session, they didn't. We saw a lot of bills get filed and a lot of bills get passed. I think at one point we had a little over 160 that we were tracking. Obviously, a lot of those were dead on arrival and never went anywhere, but we did see a lot of bills get passed. So I have put them all on here, just so you are aware of them. The ones that have an asterisk by them have an emergency clause for either some or all of the bill. Those bills went into effect immediately upon enrollment. So whether the governor signed them, allowed them to become law, or they were overridden and sent to the Secretary of State. So those are all in effect already. For those without, those will go into effect on June 29th. That's 90 days after shiny die, the last day of the session. So that's, that's kind of where we are in terms of the new legislation. Like I said, there's a lot. So I'll run through some of it. A lot of it we will be talking about over the next few months. The bills that have asterisks by them, as I said, have that emergency clause. So we are working to get guidance on those out to the districts by the 17th of this month. We'll then start working on guidance for all the remaining bills that need guidance and get that out hopefully probably by the end of, or middle of June, I guess, early June, middle of June. We haven't really set a date yet, but we'll start working on that as soon as we get done with the emergency bills. So next slide, please. So there were a lot of bills that, like I said, got passed. I'll try to hit some of the highlights and just kind of some of the stuff that's on the radar. And then if you have questions, we can talk about it. So SB 5, I'm sure you all heard discussed, it got labeled the book banning bill. I don't think it really goes that far. My understanding is a lot of districts already had something like this in place. This bill does require the department to put out guidance for the bill. We've already started working on that in conjunction with KSBA, the School Board Association, because they obviously put out model policies for all the districts. So we wanted to make sure that we were on the same page before we released ours. I also think we're going to do a webinar with them in the coming weeks. And so that should be helpful for the districts in getting ready to implement that bill. SB 25 is one that involves you all or will involve you all in the coming months. So a part of this bill is directs, directs you all essentially to figure out a way for students to get post-secondary readiness for out-of-classroom experiences, for example, over the summer. Work-based learning experiences that are outside of the classroom. So obviously, this is a really big switch. They did put in one really big guardrail, which is that those experiences have to be approved by the KB. So I know Dr. Brewer and others have already started talking about this. This will really involve our Office of Career and Technical Education. So Dr. Hargis and her staff have been working on it as well, but that's a big change that's coming. So just be prepared for more conversations around that as we move forward. SB 49 made a couple of changes to alternative teacher certification. And another bill directs us to do a review of that. So OELE will be doing a review of all the alt certs as well and making some recommendations probably about trimming down some of them because there aren't many candidates in a few of those pathways now. So they finally have recognized that. So, but it was kind of ironic that they're making changes to them, but then also directing us to do a review of them and make some recommendations. So in any case, next slide, please. SB 156, I'm sure some of you all are aware of, this is related to the CCLD contract that was not renewed last fall. SB 156 will finally allows the department to put out an RFP for a new statewide reading research center. I know our chief academic officer, Mickey Ray, is really excited and has already been working on this one. But that's a big, a big one for us to get done, and we're very excited and very thankful to the two bills, to the two education chairs, Senator West and Chair Tipton in the House for getting that done for us. 169, I'll just mention because I found it a little unusual in the sense that coming from the post-secondary side, those public-private partnerships have been routine for some time now. But learned that this is kind of going to be a new, a new world for local districts. So it's kind of exciting. I think it'll be interesting to see where they go with that. But just wanted to mention that because I didn't realize that it was a, had not hit the secondary side yet like it had on the post-secondary side. SB 107, so I'm sure you all are aware of this one, but just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So this will require Senate confirmation of the commissioner going forward. So initial confirmation upon hire and then every four years thereafter, if the contract is renewed. There is no term limit per se, but every time that contract is renewed, that will require Senate confirmation again. So a big change going forward. It does not require Dr. Glass to be confirmed. His contract runs through September of next year, September of '24, I believe. So that's in place, but after that, either he or the next person will be required to have Senate confirmation. SB 150, I'll just touch on briefly. I know this one has been talked about a lot in the press, and so I'm sure you all are aware of it. It started out as the parental rights bill that we thought would be the one that moved forward. It got amended very late in the session to include most of what was in House Bill 470, the bill related to transgender care for those under 18. And then it also picked up a little bit of what was in House Bill 30 related to facility usage by transgender students. So that's all now kind of in 150. Obviously, it's a lot to unpack. We will have guidance out on the 17th or before, for that one, kind of going through what all is in there because it is a lot. And so, so 247 was kind of interesting because it allows for students to move within a district to stay in their, in their school, but does allow the superintendent to decide if that transportation request would be reasonable. But the intent I thought was good, and I was happy to see that there was some thought about serving that transient student population. So we'll see. All right, so I'm just going to try to briefly mention S J R 98 because it could have a really big impact on education as a whole for the state. So this is aimed at the post-secondary side of education, but I think there's some potential implications for us that I want to just mention briefly. So this is from President Stivers in the Senate, and it is directing CPE to do essentially a review of the post-secondary landscape with an eye on a few particular things. One, the feasibility of a public four-year university in true southeast Kentucky. So U-Pike is down there right now, but they're a private. We have three KCTCS colleges down there or in that general area, but those are two-year institutions. So that's been a, been a talk for a number of years now about getting So, that's been a, been a talk for a number of years now about getting a true public university in southeast Kentucky. So, that's on the docket or on the agenda for them to look at. The other thing that is really interesting potentially is taking gen ed courses back from KCTCS, essentially giving those to the regional universities, which in my mind then reverts KCTCS back to the technical college system that was half of what got merged in '97 to create KCTCS. In that sense, if they were to do that, I think you all would want to be involved in some conversations about how that would integrate with our Office of Career and Technical Education to make sure that there was, you know, that those pathways continued and all that sort of stuff. The other big question that was, has been raised since it passed that didn't really get a lot of talk as it moved through the process is the impact on dual credit. So, I've gotten a lot of questions about how this might impact dual credit. I don't know. Obviously, I think CPE will include that as part of their study and potential recommendations, but this could be a very big shift for education in the Commonwealth, kind of in the scope of what happened back in '97. So, it doesn't make anything happen right now, but I just want to put on the radar that that's, that that's out there. So, all right, got a few more to run through. So, next slide, please. All right, so over in the House, and obviously even more bills passed in the House. We'll try to touch on some of these. House Bill 5 got done late in the session. That's the Bourbon Barrel Tax Bill that will eventually eliminate that over, I think, a 20-year period. It got a lot of amendments along the way. So, but obviously, that will have an impact for local school districts at some point. I'm sure that Robin and her team will talk more about that one going forward. House Bill 13, in a way, is what the short session was really intended for. So, it just changes the timeframe for bus drivers to get physical exams from 12 months to 24 months. The 24-month is the federal requirement. So, it really brings us just in line with the federal requirement, but that's, that's the kind of stuff that this session was, these short sessions were originally intended for, just FYI. House Bill 32 will allow districts to hire classified staff without a high school diploma or equivalent, provided that they provide a pathway to one at no cost of the employee. There was a little bit of talk about this during, as it moved through, you know, about whether this was kind of a good idea in terms of, I guess, optics of hiring folks without a high school diploma. The more I thought about it, I tend to think that there's some equity issues being addressed here. There's a lot of reasons people might not get that high school diploma or have gotten that high school diploma in the past, but might have something like a CDL that could fill a critical shortage as well as potentially put them on a pathway to get that GED or equivalent. So, just wanted to mention that one. So, 319, I'll talk about in a few minutes. That's the big omnibus from Chair Tipton addressing teacher recruitment and retention. But I have a couple of slides on that, I think. So, next slide, please. So, 444 and 448 were appropriations bills, but they do contain a couple of things that I'll just quickly mention. One, 444 includes the 6% raise for state employees that will take effect July 1. That will apply to regular KDE staff. I'll defer to Robin and her team because I know we have some folks that are on MOAs and contracts and that sort of thing that that will not apply to. But regular state, full-time state employees, it will. 538 was the student discipline bill. This was a huge topic of conversation during the interim and heading into the session. I was pretty impressed at the work that went into this in terms of trying to find the balance of how do you give districts, a few new schools, a few new tools, but also taking into consideration the potential adverse impact, particularly for students of color. And so, thinking about that through the process, it picked up several amendments along the way as they tried to find that balance. Anyway, let's see, trying not to hit all of these. 547 is a little interesting because I think that it will provide some interesting protections for teachers and staff of other faiths outside of the tradition, you know, mainstream American Christian Protestantism. And so, again, kind of one that might have some interesting secondary impacts. 553 was one we were very see to get done at the end because very late in the session, we finally got some funding for the growth districts. So, as you all know, the SEEK funding formula has been frozen since COVID hit, and so we have districts out there that have actually grown but are, haven't been getting additional revenue for those students. 553 will address those. I think it's 26 districts in all. It's important to note here that this does not impact anybody other than the growth districts. So, it only changes, makes changes to get additional funding for districts that have grown since COVID got frozen in, I think, 1819, but does not address any of the districts that have declined. Those districts are not impacted by this change. So, and again, I'm sure Robin and Che will have more on that moving forward. Next slide, please. All right, so that's the really high version. Obviously, I'm not touching on everything, but I did want to run through 319. This was the omnibus bill that was put together to address teacher recruitment and retention. It did get whittled down considerably. It does not contain any appropriations that were originally, or that were in earlier drafts of the bill. I do think that this is truly a first step. I do think we will see some follow-up next session to get appropriations for some things that are mentioned in here as well as other things that were talked about along the way. I think we'll see this to be, continue to be a top of the conversation during the interim and won't be surprised if we have a few presentations about this over the next few months. With that said, here's what finally made it through in 319. So, it adopts the Interstate Teacher Mobility Compact. So, this will allow, once the compact is adopted by, I think, 10 states, it goes into effect. I don't know what number we are, but we're one closer now. Military Affairs was very interested in this. Obviously, they've got a lot of spouses coming into the state for our two bases that this could potentially impact. So, and it could potentially impact those surrounding districts, right, to give them more of a pool to hire from. So, any case, that is done now. Section 2 wants us to do an exit survey that we can provide the districts so that they can survey folks that are leaving voluntarily. It just says anyone leaving voluntarily right now. I think the intent is to really look at those first early-year teachers or early-career teachers that are leaving, especially for non-teaching professions, right? So, you know, why are we losing teachers in those critical first years? And they're not just transferring districts, they're really getting out of the profession. I think that's really the most interesting population they want to try to capture. I think there'll be some good information we can learn from early-career teachers and other teachers that are moving districts, but I really think it's the ones that are leaving the profession that are going to be of the most interest to the General Assembly. But we've already started having conversations about that. Obviously, we're going to want to have a survey that is standardized across the state so that we can make some inferences. I imagine that districts will also want to add some of their own questions, so we'll try to have to figure that out as we go. Section 3 gets to the question that came up early in the session of exactly how many job, teaching job vacancies there are in the state and is asking us to make some cleanup to the KEPS system and try to really get at that number of job openings. Section 4 makes some changes to the existing teacher scholarship program, really kind of setting the stage, as I said, for coming back next session to ask for potentially an expanded appropriation for that. It's a million-dollar-a-year appropriation right now, I believe. Section 5 is that, is it, provides an eligible-for-hire letter. There's a bit of a chicken-and-the-egg situation for some alternative route candidates, and so this letter of hire should help address that. Section 6 is just posting, posting vacancies in the KEPS systems at least 15 days before being filed. Again, trying to think, get at that true number of openings over the course of the year. Section 7 has that review of the alt pathways that I mentioned earlier and asks for a report by October 1. Section 8 creates another, a new one-year interim certificate for those with a bachelor's degree and four years of work experience, assuming that they will work in that particular field or teach in that particular field. And then, Sections 9 and 10 make some smaller changes, changing the notarized leaves to just a statement so they don't have to be notarized anymore for sick and personal leave. So, that's what made it through in 319. Like I said, I think it's a good first step, but it's definitely just a first step. There will be additional work needed to continue to address the teacher workforce shortage. So, we'll see what comes next. Next slide. And just a quick note, we will roll quickly into the interim session. The interim calendar got posted last week. So, starting in June, we will see the interim joint committees meet. Of particular interest to us are the education and A and R Appropriations and Revenue Committees. So, those meet on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, I believe. So, that's out. I'll ask Dr. Brewer to share that with you all if she has not already. You'll see that we have a couple of reports due coming up in October. I imagine that we'll get asked to present on a few topics, particularly around that workforce shortage issue and continuing to address that. And yeah, so, stay tuned. The, the work on the budget has already begun. So, we'll roll quickly into a budget session over the next few months. So, yeah, not a lot of downtime. So, with that, I'll just ask if there are any questions or comments. And I know this was a very quick review, but.
You did it in 19 minutes, Brian. Board members, you have copies of Brian's slides. If you, if there's any specific piece of legislation that you would like more information, now is a good time to ask. Or, of course, you can always reach out to Brian individually. And Che and Robin, Brian referenced you a couple of times on bills with financial implications. So, if there's anything else you'd like to add, please feel free to.
And there's two things that I'll just mention that didn't get across the finish line that I think might be of interest, and I think we'll see come back around. So, one is House Bill 196. This was the Safe Kentucky App. So, this was that, based on the Safe Utah App, but it would have provided mental health services to students via the app. And the providers would have been based with Peace Hospital, U of L's Peace Hospital. So, again, I think there's some real interesting equity things here, you know, providing mental health services to students in those rural areas. I told our student council earlier today that my parents are from rural west Kentucky in a town that has no stoplight, you know. So, thinking about those kids being able to access mental health services via an app just sounds kind of amazing. But I think that one will circle back around. There was some concern in the Senate, so I think they'll continue to work to address that as well as working on how to integrate that with the existing stop-tip line. The other bill that I'm almost certain we'll see another version of was House Bill 288. This was the Teacher Misconduct Bill. So, if you'll remember back first of the year, there were some articles in the Herald Leader about teachers that kind of bounced between districts, kind of avoiding suspicions. And so, this bill was kind of trying to figure out how do you tighten some of those loopholes, but also not go too far and protect the rights of teachers. And so, there was some, still some work to be done on that, I think, but I think we'll see that one come back around.
All right. I think you dazzled them, Brian. I don't see any hands raised.
It's a lot to take in all at once. I apologize.
It's a lot. All right, thank you.
I spent a lot of time thinking about these, so anyway.
Well, we appreciate your being on top of the session from start to very late finish on midnight of Sunny Die. So, thank you. All right, and Dr. Brewer did post a link to the interim sessions as scheduled in the next few months. EARS is one that may be of interest to you. I can't remember what that stands for, but it's education, dah dah dah, stuff. So, the EARS Committee might be of interest if you want to take a look at that calendar. Thank you. The next review item is from Karen Worth and Robin to share with us more about the biennial budget request process. Many thanks to Robin and the team for breaking this down into manageable bites for us this year as we work through the process. I'll turn it over to Robin.
Thank you very much, Chair Young. We are going to continue our discussion on the preparation for the 2024-2020-2026 biennial budget request. We have tried to break it down to you in more manageable bites, and today's conversation, we're going to share some information with you and then always would invite you for discussion as we get into the later part of our presentation, which is again, continuing our discussions on additional budget requests. Today, we're going to talk about baseline budget and our defined calculations, which are two components of our biennial budget request. And I have with me Karen Worth, and Karen's going to kick us off and talk about baseline budgets. As we go through the presentation, we'll also have a couple of associate commissioners. Associate Commissioner from the Office of Continuous Improvement and Support, Kelly Foster, and Associate Commissioner Byron Darnall from the Office of Educator, Licensor, and Effectiveness. As we work toward upholding those principles of inclusion and co-creation, we've started asking our partner offices to work with us as they present to you and provide more detail and answer questions. So, Karen, I'm going to kick it off to you, and if you'll start us off with the baseline budget.
Thank you, Robin. Good afternoon. It's good to see everyone this afternoon. Baseline budget. Basically, baseline budget is what, where you're going to start. So, when we're building our budget requests for the 24-26 biennial budget, we're going to start with our base. And our base is what we received in the previous biennium. So, in House Bill 1 for the 2022-2024 biennium, those are the appropriation amounts that we're going to start with. Then, we have those opportunities. We're going to touch on defined calculations here in a bit. And then, the more extensive conversation we've had with you about additional budget requests, where you can start to layer onto your baseline areas of additional need, whether it be a current program that you're supporting or something new that the, that the board and the department would like, would like to ask funding for. So, baseline is what we, what we already have. So, I'll, next slide, please. We'll go on to the categories. So, we budget in four different categories. It's actually three, but we wanted to break out personnel just because we have a little bit of a difference there. The first category, an object type, is called personnel. That is all the salary and fringe for your KDE staff. That would include the state employee staff at the ATCs and in KSB and KSD. We also have another piece of the personnel complement, which are our PSCs or professional service contracts. These focus on those specialized services specifically around KSB and KSD, our assessment contracts, where a professional service is, we put out a solicitation, and we ask for vendors to apply. We go through an award review negotiation process, and the end result is a professional service contract. Again, that is budgeted in the personnel complement, but reflected a little bit differently in our budget request. We then have operating, which is real simple. All the people, they need supplies. They need to travel. We also pay the rent for the building that we occupy, utilities to keep the lights on at the Sauer Building. So, our operating is going to be just that, what it takes to keep all of us able to do our jobs. And then, the last category in our baseline budget is grants. And I know you've heard us say Lars lines or the Lars alphabet probably a million times. So, I think we currently have, I think, probably A through U in our Lars appropriation of all these different grants that have a specific appropriation tied to them. So, you've got your preschool, you've got ESS, you've got Read to Achieve, and they all have a specific dollar amount that's appropriated for that grant. Those are all allotted into a specific object type, and I would say all but maybe, maybe a percent or two goes all out to school districts. Very, very, very small amount is kept at the department. Next slide, please. Now, here's the numbers that we're talking about with our baseline. So, you'll see here, this is House Bill 1. This is our last budget bill that was passed. So, for House Bill 1, which was fiscal year '23, which were, we've just entered into the fourth quarter of fiscal year '23. So, you will see those dollar amounts by fund source. Your general fund is our, by far, our largest appropriation because it includes SEEK. So, SEEK is about, I believe, 2.9, maybe right at $3 billion of that $4.4 billion appropriation. For the restricted funds, those are a little bit different. That, that 43 million does not mean that we have $43 million worth of revenue from a, from, from private grants or restricted dollars. That's the spending authority that we have. I know that some of you probably in the past remember we've had Bill and Melinda Gates grants. We've received grants from CCSSO, from NASB. So those restricted funds, those allow us to spend the dollars based on the intent of the grant that we receive. You'll also see our federal funds. If you were to look at this same chart two years ago, you would see numbers that are probably half that amount. Of course, the reason behind that, the, the reason that it's so much larger now is because of COVID. So that increase is because of CARES Act dollars, dollars we've received through CHRISA, and then of course, the American Rescue Plan dollars that we received all because of COVID-19. So basically, our budget is, runs about $6.4 billion. Next slide, please. We wanted to show, based on just our general fund budget, take restricted, take federal out, just our general fund, we wanted to show you all what percentage or what amount is actually just Frankfurt-based personnel operating. So we took our general fund budget, not, we, we took SEEK out because SEEK does not pay for any personnel or operating in Frankfurt. So this is just general fund that's in BOSS and Lars. So as you can see, about 30 million of the 1.2 and a half billion is for Frankfurt-based personnel operating. So if you do the percentage, that's a little over 1% stays actually here in Frankfurt. Next slide. I think that's all I have, and I'll turn it back over to Robin.
Thank you, Karen. Now we're going to talk about defined calculations. And I think of defined calculations almost if, if you personally were paying defined calculations, think of it as like your mortgage payment or your electric bill or your water bill. All things that are necessary, but you don't have a whole lot of control of what you get charged for that amount. So defined calculations are amounts that are approved by the Office of the State Budget Director, NLC, and basically are amounts that we are, we are told to place in our budget so that we will have enough to pay for those services that we receive. So they're not controlled by the Kentucky Department of Education, and the costs are decided by the agency that administers the services to us. Next slide, please. So some examples of that, and as we put, build our budget again, we receive these instructions on things that we need to include in our budget request around these defined calculations. So for example, I'm just going to hit on a couple of these. Salary increments, there is a statute, KRS 118A.355, and it tells us the statutory requirement is that all state employees receive a 5% increment each year on their anniversary date. So every year, unless we are instructed otherwise, we would build in a 5% increment into our budget request to cover that. Of course, we know historically, over the last many, many years, that has not been the case, and state employees have not been afforded that 5%. But most recently, the General Assembly has taken, taken action outside of KRS 18A and actually appropriated funds through an 8% increase. And of course, in the last General Assembly session, have appropriated funds for a 6% increase to start July 1st. So as we build our budget, whatever salary increments we are advised to include, we include that as we build our budget. We also include corresponding retirement contributions. For the current year that we are in, the current retirement contributions for KTRS are 17.105%. And then also for KPPA, which are, is Kentucky Retirement System, those employees that we have that are not part of teachers' retirement, but are part of state retirement, that percentage is 78%. So still a very high amount on those staff that we have. Again, the difference in the appropriations that have been afforded to either KTRS or to the KERS, the regular employee, state government employment retirement plan. Some of these on here as well, we are assessed an amount based upon how many full-time employees we have or what our cap is. Health insurance is also costed out for us. Workers' comp, you see rent, utilities, and insurance that Karen mentioned on there as we work on, as we are a tenant here in the Sauer Building, we pay rent and utilities and insurance costs. So all of these things are ones that are pretty much predetermined by us as we build our budget. Next slide, please. So we wanted to kind of provide that high level, again, the baseline budget that is compiled, and Karen and her staff do a lot of the, the work on both the baseline request and the defined calculations as we are provided instructions through the Office of the State Budget Director. But it takes a lot of time and effort and energy just sort of building that through the forms and our budgeting system, which is called K-Bud. As we look forward to the second part of our presentation, a recap on really as we build this budget request, what we've already done. You know, back in February, we looked at the six-year capital plan process and recommended projects, and you all looked at those. And then we started introducing our additional budget requests. What Karen and her staff and the rest of the department across KDE has now been doing since February is as they presented things to you and, and we got a better feel of your receptiveness to include some of these things, we are now spending time costing out what each of the ABRs will, would cost so that we can submit those to you in June. So today's presentation, we're going to invite a couple of other offices to talk about some more ABRs with you. If we can go to the next slide, please. And the first one is the Kentucky Educational Recovery Fund. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kelly Foster, and she's going to talk to you about this additional budget request.
Good afternoon. Thank you. This is a new ABR coming to you guys for review today. We are requesting to establish the Kentucky Educational Recovery Fund to support statewide efforts for school improvement. Currently, all of our school improvement work is being funded by federal funds. And with the aftermath and effects of COVID, we still have a tremendous amount of learning loss across the state in other schools besides our CSI schools. So we are requesting this ABR be approved. That way, we can currently, or we can supplement our current federal funds to provide additional services across the state. And we will focus on professional learning with a focus on systems thinking, systems improvement, strategic planning, and leadership development. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Chair Young, I have a question on that.
Yes, please, Dr. Pope.
Yeah, Kelly. The, the current system improvement is all based on accountability. You just said there before, based on professional development and systems improvement. So how will you make the decision based on those schools that would, or those districts that would get that support from a Kentucky Recovery Fund budget that is different from the Elliott or whatever the name of that tool that you use for the current evaluation of districts?
Sure. So currently, the federal funds that come into the state, 7% of Title I dollars come off of the top, and 95% of that 7% has to directly go to CSI schools. So there are not actually any federal funds set aside for what we call TSI schools. And the TSI schools are schools that have a subgroup performing as poorly as the bottom 5%. So a lot of times, we offer trainings, regional trainings that are for our CSI schools, but we also invite our TSI schools, but we don't have any specific funding to provide just sole, sole support for our TSI schools. And currently, we have 403 TSI schools across the state. So this ABR would be really focusing on providing services to other schools besides the CSI schools. So you know, we, we have those TSI schools out there, and then we just have schools that do not have a federal classification that need additional support around leadership, strategic planning, and systems building due to the COVID effects.
Yeah, I was, I was just, you know, I guess, you know, it's all based on the, seems like the federal accountability as opposed to those last three things. Because I think the federal accountability and some systems thinking and design work are, are two different things. I, I mean, I think that the recovery work that you're using or have used in the past is geared towards those bottom as opposed to some districts doing some innovative things, like Clay County, I think it was, or some that's done on reading that others could use that pot of money to take a different approach than what they're currently doing as opposed to making some technical changes, but some really adaptive changes. So I would just like to.
I agree with you.
See some things like that in the future, I guess, as part of that process. Because I don't think that we can ever move our way out like G tried to do, replacing the bottom 5% all the time. I think we've got to have some of the top 5 and 10% changing some things altogether and changing the entire system instead of just trying to tweak their current things that they're doing.
No, I agree with you, and we offer several types of professional learnings. We offer NISL, National Institute of School Leadership. We have a continuous improvement summit. We do lots of work with Mike Rutherford, and that's open to other schools besides our CSI and TSI schools as well. So that, that's really what, you know, this pot of money would be used for, not, not those highest need schools, but the other ones that are still seeing learning loss and effects after COVID that just need some additional assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Kelly? And Kelly, did you give us a dollar amount on that yet?
Let's see here, the first, it's 4 million for the first year. Or no, actually, for the two years, it's 4 million.
Okay.
And I would, yeah, and I will add to, you know, when I first started doing this work in 2009, there was actually a line item in the state budget for school improvement work. And over the years, you know, that was removed from the state budget. So we've been working with a lot less money for several years now than we, than we were when I first started this work in 2009.
I don't want to say excellent, but thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. And did you say another team, Robin?
Yes, if we can go to the next slide, we'll have Byron join us. And he's going to talk to us about several ABRs that relate to teacher recruitment and retention.
Thank you, Robin, and good afternoon, board members, and thank you for just a little bit of your time. I do want to just commend Robin and Karen and the entire finance division because they are wonderful to work with and they, they tolerate me. So I appreciate that greatly. I hope, or I feel like I'm with like-minded individuals here. So I'm of the, the, the idea that it never hurts to ask. So that's, that's really what the four ABRs, which would be new ABRs, are presented, are being presented here today. So certainly, there has been a great deal of conversation, both I know certainly between Vice Chair Robinson and Chair Young, and then EPSB regarding a revised version of K-Tip as we most commonly know it. And there have been just several conversations that this is a significant need if we are going to work on the retention aspects of our teacher workforce. We know also that this has been unfunded since 2017, and there's been a vacuum in terms of this level of support for our new teachers entering the field. So just continue to beat the drum for this need with the possibility of funding what is still in statute, and that's the Kentucky Teacher Internship Program. There's certainly a lot of conversation around improving it and/or taking the best parts of K-Tip and eliminating some of the more mundane or less effective aspects of it. But certainly, we know in order to retain the talent in the classroom, this mentoring induction is supremely important in terms of getting back to a statewide emphasis of support and a systemic approach to this. Then the other three relate more in the same vein, but of course, the attracting to our profession and promoting and elevating the profession. And the ABRs for the Go Teach KY Ambassador Program, the Educator Rising Chapters that are thankfully proliferating across the state, and then the Assessment, Reimbursement, and Mentoring Program primarily for Proxess. All, each of these programs are coming from finite resources. The Go Teach KY Ambassadors that we currently have, 18 representing this, this school year, and the Educator Rising, primarily the conference that we host or the statewide competition that occurred just this past month in March. The funds are coming from general operating funds. And so this is a very limited supply, if you will. And I guess it causes me great heartburn because we are limited just solely from the Office of Educator, Licenseur, and Effectiveness General Fund in order to truly support what these programs are capable of doing. As an example, the great news for the Educator Rising is the number of participants is growing rapidly. We tripled the number attending for the March convening compared to the March before. And as a result of that, we have outgrown, via the potential of next year, we've outgrown Bellarmine as a facility to host for us. So we are currently seeking opportunities for venues, larger venues, which of course comes at greater cost. So all of these factors play into being able to continue to provide that competition, provide that opportunity for our future, potential future educators to feel that excitement and enthusiasm and celebration of going into teaching as a profession. The Go Teach KY Ambassador Program is certainly an effort to honor and elevate excellent teachers across the Commonwealth. As I mentioned, now we have 18. We've had as many as 25 in the past. They have received a meager stipend for participating, which is, I think, completely appropriate. Ideally, we would love to see this expanded to every district, having a Go Teach KY Ambassador. These individuals, their voice is growing. It does play a, a great role in the vision of honoring teacher voice. And certainly, this board has reflected that significantly and very, very proud to say that. But we would love to see this program expand. Of course, with that, it, it will take dollars in order to honor the individuals' times, but they do spend time away from their classroom, particularly attending recruiting events, educators' rising events and/or sometimes campus events to be a presence there for the department. So the educators' rising and the Go Teach are really limited currently just because of the general funds that are available to OELI in terms of perpetuating the success of these programs. And then finally, the Assessment, Reimbursement, and Mentoring Program. We partner with CKEC, who's been a wonderful partner with this in terms of an application system that individuals can receive mentoring and/or tutoring for the Proxess exam as a means of addressing some of the barriers that we see in terms of individuals entering into preparation programs or completing preparation programs. The funds for this are finite because they are coming from a WEOLA grant. So they run out, and as of now, of course, we, we don't have a continuation plan in terms of funding. So I just bring these four items for your consideration, given the need and just the, the care that we all have for attracting and particularly retaining talented educators in the state of Kentucky. So happy to, if there's any comments or, or questions around any of these four items.
Chair Young, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Well, first of all, I guess we need to get a number associated with these ABRs. number associated with these ABRs. But also I am aware, we all are aware that um as this coalition to sustain the education profession got started, there seems to be some confusion and maybe some um concern about certain data points that we would want to have about the workforce dynamics within the state. So I'm wondering, um Byron, I mean, this is, this is great, yes. Uh by all means, let's um develop these ABR, the ABRs in this area. But I'm wondering if we also need to look at um our capacity to understand the dynamics of the education workforce in the state. And go ahead and put it out there, establish a system that will allow us to understand the dynamics of transfers, the dynamics of of the the um retention across the state at a much more nuanced, in a much more nuanced way so that we perhaps can take a more um, uh we can bring greater analysis to designing interventions and um making these proposals kind of stand on the on a foundation of solid data about the dynamics. I know we have some stuff, but it doesn't sound like we have a robust, modern system that will help us really be authoritative about the education workforce dynamics in the state. If I'm wrong, please correct me. And if there's any glimmer of an idea there, please uh take it and run with it. It's something that I I believe we might want to wish we have. We 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 might wish for it someday, so why not? See if we can develop it.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I've been wishing for it for some time, so. But the the wishes don't get us anywhere, but I uh three, three quick points, and I'm glad that you brought this up. Um, first off, I I have a meeting uh next week uh with um uh Keith Davis, who probably some of you all know, uh who is uh representing CASA and uh we are having a face-to-face meeting with uh minds that can sort of delve into uh this further from offering them uh some input and getting questions from them. So that is ongoing to help uh close that loop more tightly. Uh, secondly, um thanks to uh Karen Dodd, uh we are already currently engaging in this very work. So we have looked at several examples uh from uh particularly Illinois and Colorado who've kind of been out in the forefront of collating this data and uh we have met with uh representatives from both of those states to ask them sort of how they began to take disparate streams of data and compile it into something, as you just mentioned, that is more finite and specific. And we've received excellent feedback and my my um hope is that in the very uh near future, this will be presentable in some form so that hopefully uh you will have a big smile on your face. Uh, because we we certainly agree and understand, and this has been um something that is, all all states are grappling with uh this very uh issue and concern and certainly that that is of no excuse at all because in Kentucky, we want to uh grab it by the reins and say, hey, we can do this. And I do believe that we can. We we have some wonderful support that uh Karen Dodd has brought on. Uh, we've met with um Rail, uh REL, um uh the Comprehensive Center as well. So we are, some of this is a little bit of a capacity issue, but we're working through uh these components to uh gain the outside expertise that we need. And so I completely agree and I'm very optimistic that uh this will enhance our level of detail in terms of what you just mentioned and uh in your comments. So I completely agree and I'm excited to share that this is tops on the radar.
And so, uh, Robin, I think that really begs, that Sharon's question really begs a larger question for all of us and for you when it comes to ABRs, and that is do we have conversations around return on investment, uh especially on new program dollars? And uh if not, how might we think about that moving forward? Like Sharon said, we want to be five years down the road making a big dent in the teacher workforce issue because we've spent dollars on four ABRs um that OELE has recommended that that they say is going to make a difference. So um I don't know, just wonder internally, maybe we're meddling, but I just wonder internally what kind of conversations we have about um return on investment, program, program effectiveness.
We absolutely have those discussions, what we think the dollars being invested will yield. And uh the General Assembly, of course, is very interested in return on investment. So when we talk to the General Assembly and talk to them about where they they are entrusting funds, state funds to go to, they want to know and expect for difference to be made. So as we talk to the program offices here and talk about how many dollars and what what will yield out of that, um, we also include that as part of our budget request in our narratives so that we we can explain that. Um, and really telling the story is very important. Um, and we will have some opportunities, especially on the teacher recruitment and retention. I think right now uh we are primed and poised to really be able to tell a convincing story on what is happening in Kentucky. The Board of Education, of course, is talking about it. Our partners, our can uh educational partners are talking about it. It's happening at the national level as well. We see this as really something that already has the attention on it. Um, and so now we need to educate the General Assembly about what it will take to make a difference in Kentucky. Many times, um when you're asking for a budget request, uh they don't feel the urgency of it like we might do. But I really think on teacher recruitment and retention, that part of the work is already being done for us. I mean, because of the good work of the board, um conversations that are already happening by local school districts and at the state and national level. We just need to put together the package of how we're going to move the net needle and make the difference and then the accompanying dollars to go along with it. So um uh so for some of our other things, of course, um we've heard other ABR discussions. For example, David Couch, when he talked about the KETS um increases. Um, pretty easy also to quantify what that looks for, uh what that looks like. And so we'll have dollars associated. But we will, when we come back in June, our discussion with the board in June, all the ABRs that we've already discussed with you, along with some more um that will be coming your way, we will have costs associated with each one of those. So when you see a big number, you can ask us more questions about why is that so, why is that so big? I mean, the KETS um, the KETS uh request will be a large number. Um, but it's necessary in in just to kind of maintain the excellent um service that has been uh provided during COVID. And we don't want to go backwards. So you're going to see some pretty high dollar marks and then the next uh meeting, you will actually prioritize those. So we'll go through a priority order. So you all can really express to us and the General Assembly as we advocate on behalf of those dollars, which ones are the most important to you. They're all important. Um, but but it'll give us guidance and direction on which ones to really hone in on.
All right, thank you. Yeah, thanks so much. Uh, important conversation all around. Uh Byron, just give us a little um preview spitball, what kind of dollars we're talking about on this slide?
Sure. Uh, so within uh we did just sort of uh forecast just based on sort of past uh costs. So let me, sorry, let me switch my screen here to move back to the Excel file. So it is as um as Robin mentioned, the the numbers are large, but and this is uh in a two-year increment. So from the Ktip, uh we are looking at approximately nine million and that is four and a half uh for FY25 and FY26. Uh, and that is uh sort of based on uh some prior numbers and uh approximately 3,000 new teachers per year. Again, you know, this is forecasting and just sort of using some past precedent to uh do some of those numbers. Uh, and that is at uh $1,500 per new teacher, which uh was sort of the established uh rate uh prior to uh the uh lack of funding coming for Ktip. Then in terms of Proxess reimbursement and mentoring, uh it is 200,000, which would be 100,000 for uh each year, um 25 and 26. And again, that's based on uh the responsiveness that we've had and per the applications uh that uh have gone through CKEC to date. And then the Educator Rising is uh primarily for expansion and the growth aspects of it, uh and that is 225,000. So 100,000 for 25 and then 125 uh in anticipated growth for the 26 year. And then finally, sorry, this is uh toggling slowly here. Uh, the Go Teach uh KY ambassadors for the two, if we were, and again, all of this, you know, certainly can be pared down. This is the Cadillac version, if you will. Uh, but it for the 24, 26, it would be 1.1 million and that's 550 for 25 and 550 for uh FY26.
All right, thank you.
Chair Young?
Yes, Dr. Todd.
I'm having a little deja vu experience here. I was asked or took a job once that was told to become a top 20 public research university, but after, it didn't take long to figure out that they hadn't defined what that meant and they hadn't funded it. And so uh, so the provost, I wanted to write a business plan to uh say what it would take and what we would do and so forth. What I found when we did that and go straight, you you can really overcome a lot of emotions with facts that uh lead to a culmination of what the objective is. And I think is what I'm hearing. You've got a lot of information in the way you can present it um to people who have a lot of emotional thoughts about what you got to do about this. You can cut through that if you just say, but yes, but we got to do this, 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 and this. And here's what we'll get from it. So I applaud this discussion because I think it uh, the the packaging is the, is an important ingredient.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Cod. Do duly noted. Uh, absolutely great advice.
All right, thank you. Robin?
Okay, next slide. So let's reflect just for a minute here and we're going to allow you all to kind of chime in as well. Um, in February, we heard some discussion from the board about uh five bulleted items that we've put on the screen. We would like to revisit those with you for just a minute to see if these are still items that the board would like us to continue to work toward costing out. Um, we heard discussion about the importance of literacy and numeracy, gifted and talented STEM, mental health supports and early learning. So uh interested to see if this is something that you would like us to cost out and bring back for the June meeting as well. Um, some of these things, of course, may bleed into other areas and um so we're happy to either take some of those off, add some more. Um, we're really interested in sort of the uh things that the board finds most important as we work on United We Learn and moving forward in that path. Um, we are just always trying to seek your input and your guidance and your direction as we continue to work on building the biennial budget so that we can make sure that we don't leave anything out that you're really interested in.
Thank you, Robin. I think you'll find tomorrow helpful as well when we look at some internal board goals and some uh priority conversation around that work. So I know you guys, you and your team always tune in, so you might find that helpful as well. But board members, do you have any uh thoughts to share at Robin's request at this point about our earlier conversation? I might just remind that that toward the end of that conversation in February, we did talk about um the need to be careful um that if you have too many goals, then you actually achieve none of them. So um that's a cautionary tale. Uh, but in terms of uh putting dollars to everything on this list still seems like a reasonable pursuit uh to me at this point. Dr. Robinson? Oh, yes, Dr. Poe and then Dr. Robinson.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, we can discuss this more tomorrow, but from that last board meeting, you know, as we continue, I think, you know, our our number one focus of this board uh from those test results that we showed is literacy and numeracy. So um we we need to make sure that the efforts that we've started in relationship with the letters training is built into a budget when the federal dollars has been distinguished because if we don't, we'll just fall back as we do on any other initiative we start and then change.
Thank you, Dr. Poe. And I um I've gotten a preview of uh Mickey Ray's presentation tomorrow um where she helps us think about an alignment um between the literacy efforts that we have underway in Kentucky and the deeper learning movement, which I think brings a really good synthesis to our conversation. Uh, but point very well taken. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Robinson?
Well, that's uh, that's exactly where my mind uh went. It is like, I really want us always to be thinking of integrating and strengthening any initiative to the point uh even of considering the sustainability issues because we know that you know, letters is not going to do what it could do uh within the, what, three-year funding cycle or whatever. We've got to be changing the system to incorporate the things that we want to make sustainable and keep them sustainable. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can think in those terms rather than think of these as discrete ABRs necessarily. Um, so I'm, you know, I, and and I'm also thinking of the conversation uh about the recovery funding, uh the recovery funds and the support for the improvement that needs to happen. And ev- every school has suffered a setback due to COVID. And um every school deserves, if we can offer a system of support to all those schools, not taking anything away from these schools that are, that are our target of intervention, if you will, the schools that are really should be our focus of of, you know, how do we give them a hefty uh amount of support and and everybody, the support they need to have uh to experience a planned improvement effort with regard to student outcomes. And I'm just going to kind of lay it out here. I mean, some of what we are dealing with has to do with the trauma that so many of our students have experienced based on COVID, based on environmental and climate issues, based on the trauma of knowing that right now gun balance is the is the leading cause of death among students in our country. And this year so far, we've had almost 150 instances of mass shooting. Our students are or getting oriented in some way to an environment that most of us did not experience as students. And I wonder if we are really ready to um support all that that means in terms of what they present as learners. So I I mean, I I was, the Student Advisory Council was just very, very um articulate in and scholarly in their approach, but the policy implications all around are just profound. Uh, it's certainly policy about gun control, but it, to me as a professional educator, it is also an issue of practice. And so I I don't know that that's what men- mental health supports means. I don't know. But I do know that we've got learners who are different. And I'm not sure that we have yet embraced all that that means. Let me put it this way. I'm not sure that we have embraced all that we can understand that it means because I think our understanding will get more um more refined over time, but I, that is a serious concern. But I, that is a serious concern that I feel like, you know, it's like, okay, the, in a way, the pandemic's over, but the repercussions of it are far, 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 far from over with regard to student learning.
Thank you so much, and to Dr. Todd and to Dr. Poe. Robin, I think those comments were really helpful for me. Some clouds lifted, just empathizing with you and your team in terms of how you prioritize and make sense of myriad goals for individuals on this board and this board as a collective body. And from what I just heard, I think the praxis for me is around the whole child. So I hope that's helpful when we hear talk about sustainability and meeting the needs of individual learners and literacy and numeracy in a deeper learning equity environment. Then I really do think that we, as a board, value the whole child movement in ensuring the academic, social, emotional, physical well-being of students in the work that we do. So that, you know, as we have further conversations and refinement, I think that may be helpful to the conversation. As I look at the list on the screen, those scream whole child themes to me, so.
And, and I think we can also, even though we've been fairly granular in each of the ones that we've brought to you for consideration. If you remember, even the last time when we built our budget, we had an opportunity to collapse several things or to think of things in more of a thematic way rather than as individual projects. And so as we, as we continue to work on the A B Rs, we will keep that in mind with a whole child component or with a broader mental health, safety component, learning loss component, teacher recruitment, retention, workforce component. So we will try to also start thinking about how we can kind of pull some of these together that might, that might make more sense from a thematic type of proposal for us.
Okay, good, good.
Appreciate the comments of all the board members, really, really helpful as we start trying to build and cost out for our next meeting. Let me, let me finally turn it over to Karen. She's going to walk us through our next steps, and we'll conclude our presentation for today.
Thanks, Robin. As Robin mentioned, in our June meeting, we will have the A B Rs that we have discussed with you in today's meeting and in February. And you'll, there'll be, it'll be the more traditional look that you've, that you've had in the past. We'll have a chart, we'll have it broken out by, we'll have some, a small amount of narrative, and then we'll have what the, what the dollar amount is for each year of the biennium. So we will list all of the A B Rs that have, that have been presented or have been turned into my division for consideration. I believe we will have another office or two that is going to speak in June. I don't know for sure who that will be, but I wanted to leave that on the, on the agenda. Just I think we will have one or two other offices speak. And then just continuing this conversation with you all as we, as we try to create. You know, I love the idea of the merging and the, you know, everything, everything, you have the whole child, and then everything, everything comes down from that. So as we, as we create this budget request, we, we really do appreciate this conversation because it helps us to see the structure that you all are looking at. So, and that's all we have today.
All right, thank you all so much. And one final review item. Sorry, lost my notes there for a second. This, back to Robin and Karen, spending a lot of time in the hot seat today. Report from, our audit report and expense reports from the commissioner, and you do have an item linked in your portal. So back to Robin and Karen.
Yeah, this will be a quick one. Twice a year, we come to you and share results from our audits and also share expenditure information from the commissioner's office as well as for the Kentucky Board of Education. So you should have that expense report that has been provided to you. And Karen's going to walk quickly through a good audit report for us. And we're, we're both available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Robin. Of course, the auditor's office does the statewide single audit. It comes in two different volumes, and we have already received the published version of both volumes of the SWAC, is what we refer to that document. And we are very happy to say that for both volumes of the audit this year, that K D E had no findings in either, in either audit.
Excellent. Bravo. That's wonderful to hear. When I was a kid, SWAC was sealed with a kiss, Karen. So I don't know if that's what you guys are referring to or not.
No, not nearly that, not nearly that much fun.
All right. Of course, we're available if you have any questions about the expense reports.
All right. Board members, any questions for Karen or Robin? Okay, well, congratulations. That is lovely to hear, and we appreciate the diligence and excellent fiscal oversight. Love a good audit report. Love it.
Thank you very much, and appreciate the good work of the team here at K D E. Karen and her group do an excellent job when it comes to all the financial stuff.
Absolutely. Lots of congratulations all around. Thank you very much. A big celebration. I think we're just tired. Board members, that does conclude our agenda for the first half of our April convening. We will meet again tomorrow morning at nine, in person, if you are available. I know a couple of folks are going to be virtual tomorrow. We will be at the Sauer Building starting at 9:00 a.m. But thank you so much for your time and engagement this afternoon. Especially appreciate your flexibility to pivot to a virtual meeting. At this time, I am open to a motion to adjourn.
So made. Steve Trimble, so made.
Still, Steve Trimble, thank you. Do we have a second?
Joanne Adams, a second.
All right, on that motion and second, no further discussion. Dr. Brewer, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McCrary.
Patrice McCrary, yes. Look forward to seeing you tomorrow.
Randy Puff.
Yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, yes.
Blue Young.
Blue Young, yes. Safe travels, everyone. Thank you so much.